Commissioners Court of Grimes County. We will go straight to Agenda Item Number One, call the meeting to order. If you'll rise and join me for the invocation and remain standing for the pledges to the U.S. and the Texas flag, shall we pray? Father, we thank you for this day, dear God, and for the blessings of this life. Father, we thank you for loving us so much and allowing us to be your children. We pray, dear God, that you watch over our county, that you watch over our state, that you watch over our nation. Keep us safe, keep us free, and keep us mindful of you in all that we do, Father. For those that are not able to be here today because of illness, we ask that you be with them, help them through their recovery. Father, we know that there is tragedy amongst us and around us, and we ask, dear God, that you just help us to remember them in prayer, support what we can, and serve one another. It's in your son's precious name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Please be seated. Second item on the agenda is for public comments. Do we have any public comments this morning? There'll be a moment of hesitation while we get them ready for their public comments. I know the suspense is building. And here it comes. Come on up here, guys. And if I understand, y'all are from Anderson, and y'all are the seventh grade history class or part of the seventh grade history class? Is that correct? I'm sorry? Yeah, that's fine. And Ms. Jolly's there with you, is that right?
She won't come up. It's their moment.
It's their moment, okay. So, fellas, you want to tell us what's going on here?
We chose to do a project on Texas history. We chose our project with our group. We wanted to do a natural courthouse in our area.
Okay. Kind of right next door and recognizing your town. Now, I have a question. Did y'all get a box of new popsicle sticks, or did you have to take a bunch of sticks, get the popsicles off of them, clean them up, and then build the courthouse?
No, I had a box of popsicle sticks laying around.
Oh, okay. Laying around. Maybe from a previous time of enjoyment, all right. Well, guys, this is absolutely tremendous. How long did it take y'all to put this together?
I think we had like three days.
Three days? Okay, well, you got the manpower, you got the know-how, you had a good example down the street from you. Well, the courthouse that's over there now has been since about, what, 1896, I think?
1896, yeah.
Yeah? How long do you think this one will last?
Give it five years.
Give it five years, okay. Well, I think that is just outstanding with your... And I understand you're going to let us have this? Okay. What I would like to do is to put it in our jury deliberation room over in the courthouse on the first floor, and that way, when people come in, have jury duty, and they're debating guilt or innocence in cases, they will have this memento from you, fellas, to look at. Plus, I'll see it every day because that's where we keep our coffee pot. Okay? Would you like to introduce yourselves to the court, please?
I'm Mason York.
I'm Jacob Worcey.
I'm Adam Ray.
Guys, thank you so much. I'm going to ask, if you don't mind, can I get you the setting on this table right over here by the counter, very carefully? Did y'all... Did we get one? Sure, absolutely. Okay. This is the photo op that might not come around till you get into the eighth grade, so... There we go, guys. All right. Does that work for everybody?
There she is.
There's Nicole.
There she is.
Miss Barbara. Step there, you go.
Sure.
Stand up, Commissioner.
Can you get one with your teacher?
I think she should be here.
Yeah.
Come on in.
She's an inspiration.
There we go.
Sit down, Mary.
Wait, 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 wait. Harry Duck. All right. Guys, thank you very much. Appreciate it so much. Not everybody that comes to see us brings us gifts. Ms. Jolly, y'all are welcome to stay for the balance of the court, or if the guys need to get back to class?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you again, guys. Sorry. Next class. That's pretty sweet. Very nice. Are there any other public comments? That'll be hard to beat, but...
Might be future commissioners in that.
Absolutely. Our county judges. Last call? All right. Moving on to Consent Agenda Items Number Three, Number Four, and Number Five. Consider and take action to approve payroll. Consider and take action to approve the treasurer's list of claims and bills. And Number Five, approve monthly reports submitted by the county treasurer for April 2018 and authorize advertisement of affidavit of same in accordance with Local Government Code 114.026. See Page Five of this agenda. I do have a question.
Also Number Six.
Oh, also Number Six?
Budget amendment.
Oh, let me get past that.
It's at the top of Page Two.
It is. Consider and take action to approve budget amendments and line item transfers. I do have a question. I guess I paid more attention this time. This is posted, not in the paper, but it's posted on the county's website. Is that correct? When I read the code, it gave us the option to do one or the other.
Along with all of our receipts in our county's paper.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
I do have a question also. Let me find it. When we're on line item, the transfer from the auditors department to the IT department, is that a line item transfer, or is that a budget amendment? If it's coming out of one department going into the other?
We're not changing the overall bottom line of the entire budget.
Mm-hmm. So it can do... It can go from one department to the other? Okay. Thank you.
Are you on the IT section? Just for your information, that consulting fee from ISP where it says hourly $495, did they... They did not get $495 per hour. That's multiple hours. It came up to $495. I need to double check that.
Oh, you're in the deals, aren't you?
Yeah. Okay. All right. I do have a question also on the list of claims that the expenditure that goes to Iowa Volunteer Fire Department, do we do a fire department on a monthly basis or quarterly basis? And do... Does each fire department come up at the same month in that quarter? Or we do... Do we rotate that around?
They're supposed to all come up in a quarter.
Iowa had some issues, and that's why they didn't get their budget amount in October.
Okay, so theirs is delinquent. Or their payment is delinquent, not on our part, but on their part?
Right.
Okay.
Their fire chief was out for a period of time with an illness, so when he came back, there was a lot of things that were turned in.
Okay.
They didn't have their paperwork in state with the fire association, and that's one of our requirements.
Well, since we recently had discussion about fire departments, I didn't know if we paid them on a rotational basis, or all at one time, or however it worked. Commissioner Cox and I are still new guys, so we get to ask those basic questions, right?
Thank you.
You're welcome. And then I have one last question. Is it the end of the world on account 0488 if you change the name of that account from garbage to solid waste?
We can do that.
I don't know. I think we ought to just upgrade our terminology with some of the big counties around, so... If that's okay, that's great. All right. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? If not, is there a motion?
I'm making the motion that we approve the consent agenda items Three, Four, Five, and Six.
That's second motion. There's a motion before the court to approve consent agenda items Number Three, Number Four, Number Five, and Number Six from Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Mallett. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? Number Seven. Consider and take... This is Grimes County Sheriff's Office with Lieutenant David Cook. Consider and take action to approve annual plan maintenance agreement for the 600 kilowatt standby generator and the LEC with Cummins Southern Plains Houston. We have attachment number seven. Letter of explanation and the contract behind it. I feel sure the auditors and legal have looked at that contract?
I have. I have. It's not hardly complicated.
No. It's one of the easier ones.
Did that... Good morning. Did we answer the question you were... I got a message from you yesterday.
Partly. I'm going to ask our chief deputy, Todd Green, here to address that particular subject that I was going to call you on.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
If we look at this, Judge, I see it as a maintenance agreement. It's not a... It doesn't bind us contractually to coming to Southern Plains for maintenance on the generators. But the auditors want to call it a contract that should be approved because we're encumbering the county in theory, I guess. So, haven't done it in the past. It was something I picked up on when I came into my current position beginning of 2016. And there was no maintenance being done on that large 600 kilowatt generator that we had. The jail one, the smaller one? Yes, and that's got its own separate agreement which comes up at a different time. Next time it comes around, I will offer it to the court for their approval.
Sure.
But the main thing is it's being done, has been done for the last two years, and this is the renewal for the following year, which basically for a set fee, they're going to come in, do the total.
Right. And this is a budgeted item for you folks?
We can absorb it within our 410 line item, which is maintenance and repair.
Fair enough. Chief, anything to add?
Of course, you're aware, we're meeting last week, but hurricane season coming up.
Right.
This particular generator we got from our Hurricane I grant, there were seven, I think, given across the countywide to keep the county offices up and going. Our particular generator that we have on current base right now only supplies to jail, and that's what was put in and required for jail commission. This is a separate generator to actually run the whole building, so when we do have an emergency that our whole building will be up, and we can continue our daily service as normal. As far as that, it's a maintenance contract where they come out every year, check the batteries, bell, cool and change the oil and all of that, and, you know. I would like to add, though, part of that grant, there was two other generators. Mr. Finkie was involved in the project originally. But there was two generators that were mounted on a trailer, each other on a trailer, that was stationed at the Navasota Annex when we first got the generators. And we tried to find records to actually determine where they're actually supposed to go, because shortly after we received them several years ago, some thieves broke into the VW hall and asked and tried to steal the generators. So, safekeeping, we brought them over to the sheriff's office and stored them. Now, these generators are sitting there at sheriff's office and have been for years, and it's a viable use that we have these generators. Not sure who the actual owner's supposed to be, because they're awarded to the county for the grant.
Right.
So, at this point, I believe they possibly could have been going to nursing homes, but I think nursing homes have generators now. But we would like to actually probably get these under a maintenance contract in the future, and that way, they will be up to service and get the necessary cables, so in event, you know, we do have an emergency area in the county, that these could be deployed to wherever we need, you know, access, whether it be nursing home, hospital, you know, county annex here. So, we'll have these available for use in the event of emergency.
Do the radio towers, I know there's, you know, one going up and... Does it come with a generator itself, or would that be something to...
I believe the one in... Be asked is coming with...
With the generator? I think that's right, but I'd have to double check the contract on that.
But, you know, of course, in event, you know, we can always, you know, use it.
Use it, yeah, yeah.
Now, may I ask the question? Are these the two generators that David Lilly was overseeing?
Yes, yeah. But now, we're kind of unaware if these have been serviced or not, so that's why we're coming, you know, since we're already involved in the two service contracts, it might be just feasible just us keeping this going for those two generators.
I did talk to David Lilly himself about the need to have the maintenance going on, bring them up to... I know the battery's going to be replacing them, and the need to get the necessary cables, which we can probably do through coming to Southern Plains. I talked to them about it. They said, well, we don't produce the cables or manufacture them, but we can tell you where you can get them from. So, we don't have any expertise that I'm aware of in the county. Assuming they were up and running and functional and serviceable, the expertise to actually in an emergency situation connect a building, I don't know.
Well, did we ever locate the keys to them?
The key's not a problem. The keys, some...
That's general keys. They can get the keys to them. The issue obviously is keeping them serviced and then getting the necessary... Getting the cables ready, so in event something happens and move them out. Now, you're still running the situation is that they're going to have to be hardwired into the building, which obviously electrician will have to, or if they're... Where are we going to place them? Have it pre-wired where you can just plug in directly in your own business, but that's another risk that will have to cost.
But as of this moment, we don't even know where...
As of this moment, they're inoperable.
Well, they're inoperable, but if they were operable, we don't know where we would use them, or if we can connect into the facility, we'd want to use them?
Now, when you say they're with the Navasota Annex, you're talking behind the hospital?
No. Navasota, where your office is, JP, your office, they're back over there, behind there.
In the Ag Extension Building or something? I've never seen them over there.
It's been several years.
I mean, we didn't move in until...
It's been over five years at least.
14, but it...
It was... It might have been around the time they were doing the construction of the building, when they were stationed over there.
Is that when they tried to break in the building? Okay. I know what they did.
Yeah, they broke in there in the VW hall, and then they tried to actually hook up to them and try to pull them off, but they got stuck.
Well, the item before us is to take action on this. I will take it upon myself to talk with David Lilly and see if he knows destination for those, and if he does, and I'll also talk about service agreement. If he does not have that lined up, I'd like to come back to you, Lieutenant Cook, and maybe the possibility of coordinating with your service provider and see what they could do on those generators so that we are ready, and then let y'all maintain them in your possession until we have a need.
I guess one word another, Judge, we're going to need some sort of budget line item, either a small increase in hours. It's just as easy for me to take care of those two as the other fixed units that we have.
Well, instead of increase, can you use that absorb word you used earlier?
I can do my best.
Okay. That'd be awesome.
Let's see what the mound is. Hook it to it, make sure it's not over the apple service.
Certainly.
That was just a worry, though.
And I'll see if David Lilly has anything in his budget for that possibly, okay?
I think more the concern I have is we have... If we have a hurricane Harvey drop on us, that we have the expertise, we have the equipment assuming it's maintained, we have the expertise to be able to utilize those two portable generators.
And it's like we were talking, like Chief Green mentioned, we had an emergency planning meeting about hurricanes and things, and this falls right in line with what we're talking about. So, we'll look into that further, okay?
If they get it repaired in this budget year and they don't have the money to cover it, I can...
I think it's in David Lilly's budget. I thought it was like $10,000 or something like that.
Those money, even in your rentals and contracts in jail, we can move over. We can find the money. I don't think it would be that much, to be honest with you guys.
We've kind of got comings to look at those two, but they're quite capable of handling any maintenance required on those two portable generators.
All right. We'll put that to bed this week, because hurricane season starts this week. Thank you very much. Is there a motion before us?
I make the motion we approve the annual plan maintenance agreement for the 600 kilowatt standby generator and the LEC with Cummins Southern Plains Houston.
Second motion. And do we want to make the county judge's signature?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And who's second? There's a motion before us from Commissioner Walker to approve Agenda Item Number Seven with the addition of the county judge's signature, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? Lieutenant Cook, there's your agreement, contract. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Eight, discuss and take action to approve pay for combined department head position 911 G.I.S., environmental coordinator. See attach number eight. Would you prefer us to go into executive session to have that discussion? Mr. Attorney, can we do that without having it put on the agenda, since it's a personnel item?
I'd rather you not.
If it wasn't put on there.
I'd rather you not. We've had this conversation before, is whether the little tiny language at the bottom that says we reserve the right to go into closed session at any point is sufficient. In case of, the AG opinions tend to turn on what the community expects from the court, and in the past, it has been the practice to put it on the agenda item. If that's the case, I'd rather not run the risk of somebody having some complaint that they weren't on notice, that that may occur. And if you hold the closed session, I will certainly leave.
Okay. Well, then based on those comments, I'd suggest we table it to our next meeting, and we will... Shereef, you'll make a notation that will place it on there with the notation that we would go to executive session if requested. Thank you, Mr. Foles, for your counsel. Agenda Item Number... Is that permissible with the court? Okay. Agenda Item Number Nine, consider and take action regarding cause number 29, comma 492, Grimes County, Texas versus Charles W. Cook in the 12th Judicial District Court of Grimes County. It was expected that the court will convene a closed or executive session regarding this item as authorized by Section 551.07, one of the Texas Government Code Consultations with Attorney. So now, we were... We're going to go into closed sessions. Mr. Cook, if you'll stay with us for just...
You gotta be... Don't say five unless you want 25.
Okay, so what do I say if we all be like that?
Yeah. Yeah. It's all right. What do you say? You said, God, excuse your saying.
Okay, we're back. We're coming out of...
Hold on a second. I've already got it back on. Oh, you've turned it on, okay. I just turned it back on.
Doesn't say it is.
I got a red light.
I got it.
You got it? So, we're reconvening from our executive session. The time is 10:03. Mr. Cook, we have discussed the situation at hand, and it's upon us as the court to protect our citizens, yourself included. What we don't know is for Mr. Lingal, who is the one property owner... Am I pronouncing again correctly? Lingal? Your neighbor?
There's only one. There's one there, and one on the corner here. It's Eli Watson is the one that has the place. That's the only one.
It's the piece that used to be Lingal, Scott Lingal, whichever piece that was, Charlie. The one that used to be Scott Lingal.
It's 11 acres for Lingal Scott.
Yeah, that's the one. That used to be.
Okay, now who owns it? Who owns it now?
His name is Eli Watson.
Eli Watson, okay. So, we're no longer concerned about Mr. Lingal, we're concerned about Eli Watson. And the question that we have as a court, does he have... In his deed, does it give him access to 249? Or does he have... Is there... Is the right word, fee?
Fee. Fee simple.
Fee simple, to have access from his property to 249?
He may or may not, but he still has all the access that he's always had.
Yes, sir.
And all of the easements that he's always had. But if he doesn't have, I will make sure that he does have.
Okay. And that's our concern, is that we just want to make sure that he doesn't become landlocked for some reason. We also want him to understand that, you know, if he has access from... If he has deed information from his property to 249, then that'll be his private drive, and there's no issue whether that's a county road that he might want us to maintain, or is that his private access to the 249?
It's always been a private access, Judge, and it still would be that way, yes.
You said, Mr. Charlie, you said you would make sure he had access to... Are you still talking about private road, or are you talking about in terms of a driveway, maybe off of 249?
I think that he's covered in here, I think, as easily as we already established, but if he doesn't have, or it will be more convenient for him, I'll be more than happy to work with it.
Good. Okay. So what we're going to... We're going to... What we're going to... What we've asked Commissioner Dobianski to do is to work with you in that, let him be the liaison to the court, and when Commissioner Dobianski feels that you have that information provided or can provide it to the court, then we'd be in a better position to make a decision on your request for dropping the suit.
I don't understand, Judge.
We want to make sure that now Eli Watson, in the deed agreement that you have, or have Mr. Watson come in and say that he has an understanding with you, or that he knows that it... His access is his access.
That's all established. That's in the... He has the easements that he's always had.
Do you have a copy of that deed?
Pardon me?
Do you have a copy of that deed?
No, I'm sure I probably do, but I have no idea.
If you can get one... If you can get one, and I will come out and visit with Mr. I will come out and visit with Mr. Watson personally, and we'll, we'll work through that. When we get, get that done, then, then we can bring you back, or bring him back and get this taken care of. The last issue that we're dealing with, we looked up on the record that the two purchases that you made or that you regained ownership, those are in, it's conveyed to you trustee. Is it possible for us to get a copy of your trust agreement to see how that goes?
I don't have one, it's just, I, I take, I do all my stuff to the trustee.
Okay.
I don't know how I started doing that, I'm, I'm not sure why I'm now.
Because the, the big piece of property that you have, that's under your name, not as trustee, it's just under Charles Cook. But on the other properties, it's under Charles Cook trustee.
No, I don't have a trust.
You don't have a trust, okay. So based on that, we're gonna table this one more time. Commissioner Dobianski is gonna go talk to Mr. Watson. Bring clarity to the court. We'll put, when he says, and, and the two of you are ready, then we'll put it back on the agenda. We'll try to put this to bed.
That's what we're gonna do today.
Well, we did, we had some other questions. But we do have a responsibility to make sure that we protect the citizens, and the, and the one citizen that we don't know at this point is Mr. Watson, to make sure that.
What is it we don't, you don't know? That somebody's got a block, got a block, nothing's changed, Judge. He still has his act, he still has his easement, but I see his. His position has not changed, one way or the other, because of the road.
But again, that's a private road.
Yes, it's private, it was what you're saying, that we need to make sure, that's what he has.
But if we were looking at the map correctly, that, his property goes into your private road, and then it goes into two forty-nine. We wanna make sure that, when it's all said and done, that he has access to two forty-nine.
That's no problem, he, he has that already.
And that's what we wanna verify with Mr. Watson and in the deed agreement.
Can I show you what?
Sure, yes, sir.
Sitting here, he has, the road comes out, it comes in two ways. It comes in off of, off of, of three oh fours and out of Millstone here, and this is off of. The, the, this is the access. He has an access from here on, he still has this, it's all recorded. He has this, it's all recorded.
And that's what they're asking?
Yes.
Does this have easement from between, see this piece of property here?
Yes.
Does he have easement in here that he could still get to two forty-nine? Okay, but is that the private road? Is that, that's the private road?
Yes, it's, but it's an easement.
Well, and too, our concern is, I know there's a creek crossing there.
Yeah.
You know, in the event that it's ever washed out.
But it's washed out now.
That's what I mean, so he doesn't necessarily have access to that.
If you look here, this, this road here that gives access to routing, I'm almost certain it, it easement, that this easement that ties it, I forgot, it's like a lower cut. So he has, he has easement down this way, out this way, and back this way.
So this is the road right here?
Yes.
Okay.
But it's the same as this. It's just not showing all the, not cleared out as much.
And I, I think what they're trying to get to is to make sure that Mr. E, Mr. Watson understands the transactions that are occurring, that, what you're coming to the court asking for. And to make sure that he's in agreement, he doesn't have any issues with, you know.
You haven't talked to him, but I did, but he still has everything that he had before this ever came about.
And just making him aware of what's going on around him as, as a citizen.
Well, then too.
He's aware of it?
Yes.
And too, our, our concern is if this road becomes impassable, what rights does he have to have it? Say, this road becomes impassable?
That is impassable, but.
So he technically doesn't have access to one two forty-nine.
He does, if, if, this washed out in a big flood. And I just haven't had the chance to get it back, but I don't wanna put it back, because this road.
Well, it looks like the road's actually gonna go here first.
Well, wherever it goes, he has access, I believe, somebody may have to fix this.
And what kind of agreement does he have with you to, in order to make sure you've put the funds toward having that fixed?
Well, when we were gonna make this subdivision, there was a, a property owners association to be formed.
So he would be the sole person in that property, so he would be up to him to actually fix his own road?
At this point, yeah.
Okay, that's, that's what we would need to speak with him and have an agreement with him, that he would be responsible for that. Well, we would need to make sure he's okay with that. Because this, this wouldn't have been on if you wouldn't have tried to subdivide it.
What is the alternative? If, if he's not okay with it, what?
We have to figure out what, what he's okay with.
But he, he goes out the backside. That's where he goes, there's his mailbox and everything. So he goes out Millstone.
Well, like I said, we just wanna protect his rights to be able to access. And he has the right to, to fix his own creek crossing right there, right? So, and would he want to spin that kind of?
Worst case scenario, you're right. Something would happen to me, because I'm the only one with other, the only alternative he has would be me. Of course, he doesn't have any, any, uh, any immediate desire to have this fixed. And I don't, he, I would like to have it, because I like to go out that way. But it's, what happened, we got a big, a big pipe there. That truck walked out and got stuck in the pipe.
Yeah, that's happened. But that's, that's our concern, that's what we wanna address and clarify everything, as far as we wanna push it.
But he doesn't use it now anyway. Nobody can use it, there's no.
I'll get out there, I'll get out there and talk to him, and let's see if we can find a deed to that thing and.
They can give you a deed. All right.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cook.
Thank you, sir.
That'll bring us to agenda item number ten.
I'll make the motion again.
I second. There's an emotion.
Excuse the judge, was there a motion to table?
Did we need a motion on, to table it? No, we don't. No, just, we're, we're just tabling that. No action until we hear back from Commissioner Dobianski. Okay, Commissioner Walker made a motion, who seconded it?
Yeah.
Commissioner Dobianski. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, we're adjourned.